Dean, all members please turn on. Members, please turn on your mic so they can hear us.
You got my Joe share.
Roll call, please.
Smacko.
Um, excuse.
Ready?
You're.
Sure.
Here.
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 Here, similar.
Here. Next item is one point two five approval of absences. Approval of Jen Smackel being absent for the family vacation report. How do we all?
Ready said excuse.
Well, we still got to be approved. I can say excuse it for meeting. And we have to approve that.
I know it's real.
I got a first, I get a second.
Hi, Pro.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. The next item, one point five nomination of President Pro Temp was done last month. We need to need that from the general.
A bunch of ladies. Of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America. Why don't you send? Under our. Need invisible. Of liberty and justice for all.
By the way, we give thanks. For being here tonight and next village business. And we also ask that. You, uh. Guide our. Numerous, uh, presidents of this area who are suffering life threatening illnesses such as. Amen. So the next item will be approval of consent agenda with the. Acception of nomination of Paul Tep. May I get a motion for that, please?
Yes. This is for the consent agenda, right?
Yes.
Yes. I make the motion, we accept the consent agenda with the bill to be paid in the sum of ninety-five thousand. Five hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-four cents.
I got first, can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
For a second? Roll call, please. Oh, oh, sorry, Tony.
I got a couple, yeah, I got a couple things I'd like to address. In the showing the zoning report, the violation letter to one-on-one Ballard Street, that would be Chase F P. And I believe he has some information he'd like to bring to the council for. The next item, I'm going to ask maybe put on the agenda and then again. To address his concerns and. Perhaps help him out. And deadlines and these violations that may be kept in for struggles. And also, I know send up. Planning Commission report. This is Ryan Bauer addressed to council, that isn't council. Regarding the possible burning brush at his property behind the post office. And says he, we're looking into a building permit, a burn, burning permit and all that. And we have a bill of. A fire warning, it's. And he can go ahead and burn the brush if it's. No larger than thirty-six inches in diameter and in depression no less than six inches. In depth. Fully encircled by non-combustible material. Says the village manager shall issue a burning permit. I don't even know what the planning commission was like. Dealing with that. With that lot back, I was going to address this during the manager at the whole since it's been here. I've had a few people ask what's going on back there and. Doesn't look good. That's all I have about that. Last.
Okay, right.
Last thing I have, I'd just like to. Congratulate Mr. Shepkey on becoming a point of the recreation of.
Any other? Comment or concerns on? The agenda? Discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Cook. Yes. Miller.
Yeah.
Ruddy.
Yeah.
Fischel.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes.
Letterman.
Yes.
Motion.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item is approval of regular agenda. I make the motion to approve the regular agenda with the addition of Chase F P one-on-one Ballard Street. Evil and violations. Got a motion, can I get a second, please?
I'll second that.
Yeah, first a second? Can I get a roll call, please? Oh, discussion, sorry. And something, wait, it's a discussion on Chase, on the. Regular agenda, please, sorry. If none? Roll call, please.
Ready?
Yes.
Medina.
Yes.
Fischel.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
Letterman.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yeah. Motion.
Motion carry.
Like they have that the other. You know. New business.
With the end of new business, Chase kept, kept keeping. Next item. Will be managers report.
Like the voluntary one tonight. First of all, counsel on, on your desk, you'll see a little handout, uh. Ten things about the Open Meetings Act. Uh, that should be underneath your agenda. Uh, on your, uh, desk or kind of some good reading there. Uh, our audit was done last week, completed last week. All on, it went very well, uh, they defined all the information they're looking for and things, uh. Seem to go relatively smooth. Uh, Trent, our auditor, will be here next month to give you all your board on, on, uh, uh, the standings. Regarding our accounts and stuff like that, so. Uh. So we'll look for Trent next, on next month's agenda. Um. Trying to think backwards, it's been three years ago, maybe before. Uh. The council. Made a motion. To change the village treasure and the village clerk positions to appointed versus elected. There was a petition filed, so we had to hold a special meeting on us. It's during the COVID time where we, where we couldn't meet. And we couldn't have public hearings to discuss, you know, the reason behind that, the pros and cons. Uh. It, it was defeated by a handful of votes, I don't recall how many off the top of my head, uh. I guess I'd like to address this again. Uh, having gone through the audit and such, uh. Accounting practices have, uh, they're changing yearly. And, uh, uh. And, and I guess what I'm looking for is when you look at these elected positions and. And they are, uh, handling the funds of, uh, of, uh, of those taxpayers. Uh, and I'm not saying that the latest convenient positions are not in the job, but, but their terms are coming. To the polls and that's why the timing of this. Uh. I, I just think we ought to the taxpayers to have the most qualified person in that position. Uh. Handling the funds and, and they, and so, uh, uh, so it's something that I know more. Uh, there, there, there's a few more, uh, uh, townships. Going to this, uh, for that same reason. Currently. You know, when you look, we have eleven hundred people inside the village of the great Roscommon, I don't know how many of them would be, uh, uh. Age-wise eligible or, or certified or trained. Cause right now, when you run for those positions. You don't have to have any background. In finance or accounting or, or anything, you just have to get so many votes and win the election. Which, which you know, uh, may work out, you know, and it may not, but, but I guess, uh. The bad thing is you get someone in there. And every two years you get a different person. And so you're starting all over again with the training and, and, and a carryover from year, year to year, so. Uh, again, I just want to throw this out to the council to think about. Whether it's something that, uh, uh. That a practice that they would like to consider, uh. We have policies that says if, if it's a. When learning if it's something close and then there's some person that lives in the, in the village, you know, you give them the bathroom or the door over someone outside the village, but. But I guess I'm more concerned is getting the right person in there versus, uh, where they live, feeling the, the taxpayers, you know, so just something to think. Uh. Brian Graham, our, uh, village attorney, sent us a letter stating that his hour and rate. Will it will be increased by five dollars. And, uh, so, uh, I was expecting, you know, a little bit more of a. Uh, a step up in that, but, but it's five dollar increase in pay.
What is it?
It, it will be a hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. Now, the thing that, that our attorney, uh, doesn't charge for, he doesn't charge for travel time. He doesn't charge for a copier. Copying or, or, or postage and things like that, and that stuff can add up as well, so. Uh, Brian's been, been good with, and so I just want to give you a heads up on that. The planning commission, we're working hard with Heather from, uh, NIMCOT. On handling our master plan, uh, we have already went through. Uh, chapters one and three, we're currently going through two. Four and five. There's only eight chapters in the whole master plan, uh, two, four and five are more. Two is more information on, uh, uh. The latest census as far as the demographics and stuff to that, that should be, that should, uh, go, go pretty quick. The planning commission, we're going to meet again in two weeks. Go through those other three chapters and then we're going to meet again with Heather in, uh, March to, uh. To again review, uh, chapters two, four and five, so by the end, end of our meeting at March, we'll have. Five out of the eight chapters completed, so the planning commission is moving right along on that. Our next, uh, that used car lot. Down on Fifth Street, uh, that have, uh, closer doors. Uh, they approached us and wanted to know, we would be interested in purchasing. Either that parking lot or purchasing the, the entire property. And possibly the thought of moving our, uh. Our really solid down there possibly or, or loosen out ourselves. Uh. The property has some nice perks, so like this downtown parking and, and such. The building's a lot smaller than this building here. The price he's asking is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh. I looked at that building and renovating. That, uh, you'd have to do a lot of the office spaces are just open cubicles. So if you're going to hold a, a meeting. During the day, which we have, you know, a few of those from time to time, then we got all those old open offices, so. I had a, a contractor go in there and give me a. Just a, a rough estimate of what they thought, uh, it would, it would cost to upgrade that plus move the wall back and convert that. That garage area in, into, uh, a hall basically, because we still have to. Put in a records room and, and, and more offices and such, and, and the cost, uh. That he said is, uh, uh. When I said, what are you looking at fifty thousand dollars? He goes, oh no, you're talking more than that. For rent, renovating, and I said a hundred, he goes, probably not that much. But, uh, but somewhere in between there, depending on what you pick out as far as materials go and such, but, uh. Yeah, I'm, I'm curious for your input on, on that, I, I'm not sure that this is, uh, uh. A good fit for us, I'm not sure if it's a good time for us, not knowing some of our other projects, but those might, might cost to pick up something, you know. Uh, kind of on, on a wound here, but, uh, I haven't discussed this with DEA at all. But, uh, but just, uh, any thoughts? You have on there would be appreciated. Eagle. They sent us an application for affordability and, and a planning grant. And this grant. Is set up to. To help, uh, villages or townships, uh. That still might be struggling through, uh, uh, the past few years of, uh, economics. Uh. We went through and did a preliminary application and scored it. And we didn't score very high, and we scored like seventy-two, uh, uh, out of a hundred, and the reason why we scored so low. We've just been doing all this renovation to our infrastructure. And so a lot of this, uh, was to upgrade your water system and upgrade everything, and we have, and so that's why we didn't score high. You know, so I told, uh, uh, police and banner bridge. Don't mess with that egg along, we'll just withdraw our app, application and move on to some, something else, so, uh. Cause they're, uh, Eagle was looking for candidates who scored in the nineties or, or higher in order to, uh, uh. For them to be selected as some of the finest, so we were, we also listen, we say any more. Uh, the two other grants though, that, uh, one I'm excited about is, is this was, uh, offered by E D A, the Vermel. Development Administration. This grant is for infrastructure on water and sewer. Okay? And most grants now. You, you can. You can pick up grants to improve or repair your water system, but it's hard to find grants to expand. Your water or, uh, uh. Or a sewer system, this one will, will be both. And so we had, uh, talked about, uh, the industrial park. And what it would take to complete the water and the sewer, uh, in that industrial park. Uh, this includes fire hydrants, this is from the curb stops, uh, everything. And, uh, uh, and, uh, that project. Uh, will run three point five million. Whereabouts, okay? It is a sixty percent they'll fund it, forty percent we will match on, uh, grant. Uh, and looking at that, that'd be one point four million. I could pull some money from, uh, uh. From the, uh, fund equity, from, from water, I could pull some money from. One after the sewer without cutting up short. And, uh, and, uh, that would pay for, and then probably some odd general fund, that would pay for approximately half of that one point four million. So we would have had the finance, uh, a part of that matching, uh, however. We would not have to go back to the public for any type of, like. Village or any type of increase, something like that, we would just absorb that within our, our funds here, so. Uh, something to think about, I, I'll share more information, uh, next month, but, but when you think about. How long we've sat on that industrial park? And to get the water and sewer in there. And you got someone saying, I'll pay for sixty percent of that. You know, it might be the best deal that. That we have, you know, and, and, uh, uh. Trent, uh, and I had sat down and printed some, some numbers and, and as a trend, the last thing I wanted to do is. Put this council in a position where we're short in every, any area. Uh, he agreed with me being a county, he goes, yeah, we don't want to do that, uh, but he thought, uh, safely, we could pull. X amount from each, each, uh, uh, one equity and not. And not, uh, uh, burden our, ourselves, you know, so, uh, uh. So is this something that, uh, uh. That, that again, just give that some consideration. The second grant, I think I told you about this last month, it is a team. Uh, community team grant where you got to partner up with, with different entities in, in your community. Gehagans won, uh, Roscommon Area Recreation Association is, is, uh, the, the other. Uh, and, uh, that grant there, we will not hear back from them until early April. Okay, so when we called, everything got sent in. And they said we plan to make the announcement in early April, and, and what, what I did is I listed, uh, a bunch of community. Projects, if, if there may have been a, a new pavilion at the Asaba River Center. It may have been a bridge, it may have been paths and sidewalks, uh, uh. For, for Gehagans, you know, and down at, at, uh, at Metro Park, well. And we easily came up with five point two million dollars worth of projects. So we sent all those projects in that list in, in an application. And what will happen is they'll go through and, uh, uh. They'll kind of pick up the ones that they like, not just by our application, but everyone's. And then they'll, they'll start, you know, they'll award those prizes. That, uh, that, uh, for those funds, so. It's not like they're going to select all of our projects, but they wanted us to list all of them and see which one you might, might appeal to them more, so. Keep your fingers crossed, we're, we're, uh, probably six weeks away from hearing. Hearing, uh, uh, about that. And the last thing is our next food. Community food distribution will be held Saturday, February twenty-fourth at the Reps, uh, Bus Garage, and. All is welcome to, uh, volunteer to help or attend. And that's all I have, do you have any questions?
Tony?
I'd just like to say about the car lot. I'm. I'm interested in looking into the building. Buying the lot, I'm not interested to buy the lot, mm, for them, we're just creating a parking lot where, you know, that business, free snow flowing. Great for their business. Building then. Heard this. It was up for sale and leased it. So. That was a good thing. Retail.
We looked at it, if we could, if we, uh, split this building into like two different stores, you know, and. Maybe we might be able to, to make, uh, uh. You know, twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. A year, you know, and then, you know, or we could just sell it. Or, or sell it and, and cut the loss and balance it out. I haven't talked to a realtor to see what, uh, what we could get out of this building, uh, uh. Jim Perry also has, uh, uh, a little experience with retail, we're. We're, uh, thinking about bottom line would, would be probably at least two hundred thousand, but. I don't recall this before I took over here, but what, what was, how much we paid for this, eighty thousand. Okay, and, and I wasn't sure just how much we had into it.
Yeah, just thought. Trail him. Uh. When commonly goods just sold at auction, that's right. Somewhere between eighty and a hundred. Not exactly true. But, but, but it's sold, it was an online, I was thinking.
So that might be, I mean, it, it might be worth renovating, you know, we'd have to make some changes and such, but, you know, when you got two nice parking lots.
Mm-hmm.
And if there's a big parking lot in that field. And if something happened where we ever had to expand, there's nothing back there to, to expand. So.
And my other question is, uh. Any timeline on the sidewalk on Fourth Street?
Uh, we will, uh. Start bidding on that, probably in, in April, put the bids out for that. Uh. With the price of asphalt, I know you had, you talked to me about, hey, it might be better off paving that versus, uh, cement. Uh, that's what I, I need to get, get a, uh. More of a current. Price on that because of the fact that, uh, uh, I know asphalt, it just went up about thirty percent, so. So, uh, it, it might, it might be closer than what, what we think, you know, but, but I'm looking for early spring hopefully, yeah, like it.
You know, not wait till fall, right, or summertime. Maybe they could maybe go like a foot wider.
Yeah, yeah, because.
They're walking, biking.
The bridge, yeah, the bridge that we put in there. It'll probably have to be just a little wooden bridge, cause culverts do tend to. Move a bit, you know, and, and so we'll probably put in some type of, of a wooden pathway, it has to be wide enough to get, get our, uh. Uh, our, uh. Our multi-hog, you know, slowly move or bloom over and stuff like that, so. So, just do it, whole thing like that. Good point.
Other question, how big is this? Uh. Used for a building, building, building?
I would think. That if you took. From the blue wall there. Forward. Up into this back wall there, it's probably that big. Uh, so it's, it's, it would be. Uh, under half of. This, the size of this built building. Uh. And looking at that, they had one. Two, three, that four offices. Potential offices, we'd have to put, uh. The front on every officer, the door and entry, cause these ladies are collecting money and stuff like that, and I want that view open, uh. The big area in that garage, maybe make that garage area more of, of the. Common areas and meeting rooms. And different things, or one bathroom in there, we have to put another bathroom in there. Uh, we have to put, put a secure, uh, uh, record room. Something that, that, you know, so I mean, there's, there's room there. It, it would be a little bit more pension what we're accustomed to, but not saying it wouldn't work, but, but it, it's something that. That, uh, until I get a more solid number, what it take to, uh, uh. Make that the way we want, you know, it's. Uh, it's everything, but he's. I, I think we can probably give them, when I say two, two hundred and fifty thousand, that would be the top end, I'm thinking that if, you could probably negotiate something lower than that, but. Maybe, maybe two thirty-five to two forty or something in there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. To anyways.
Yeah, um. And I'm just listening at the discussion on the building, the current exit building, is this going to be on the agenda for next month? Are you going to pursue looking into renovations or?
If the council, you know, you're giving me the opinion right now that you'd like to see more numbers on that and such.
Right, and where do we get the two fifty figure from?
Been talking to the owner.
The owner.
Yeah.
I did call on that, uh. In the summer to see, uh, the cost on that, and I was under two hundred thousand from a realtor. So I, I don't, we'd have to get it professionally.
Yeah, very much.
Praise, yeah.
Jim and I, uh, met with the owner last week, and he, he, uh, uh. He made a couple of offers too, one was just about the park. You know, it really fly, want to try by the park, and so, you know. Depending on what you're going to sell for, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to us is. He, he offers a lease or buy, and I said, well. I don't know why the village would be interested in buying a park lot. Releasing a park lot. And. I'm not surprised, right, because, you know, it, it. All I wanted to do is put more money into by the upkeep and maintenance and installing the wall, you know, the, the, uh. Repaving and such, and, uh, uh, if he was saying we're common by the park lot, uh, it would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand. And, uh, uh, if you wanted to. Lease it, it would be a couple thousand a month, and I said, okay, why would I pay twenty-four thousand dollars a year for people to park and learn not making anything back out of their money, that's just not a good investment. So then we start to help the whole. And, uh, uh. And, and so, uh, uh, he's willing to work with us, he, he said, and, and his, uh. Uh, contract with a realtor, it's going to be up soon, and so he goes, you know, I'd be willing to wait after that with the local. And they go with that, so I, what I can do is I can try to get more solid numbers for you. Uh, in regards to, uh, renovation costs. And, uh, uh, and see if, see if we can get, uh, a solid number as far as what he'd be willing to let it go for, I can do that for next month. If, uh, if, if the council is willing to.
Any more questions for, for Phil? If not, we'll move on to. Public knowledge and agenda items, two minutes per speaker. Okay, if not, no, we move on to unfinished business. BPW report, this is.
Hi, so let's get past, um. We're able to, uh, the new house that's being built over on Stage Street, you know, I mean.
What's Bob Parker?
Uh. Okay, so the new house that's being built on Stage Street, uh, they're almost finished with it, it should be done in the next couple of months from what it sounds like. Uh, we were able to get. The water tap and. Service line from the water main to the curb stop ran for the, for them. Uh. The sewer line is ran to our main. Um, so. I think their contractor was, should have already ran the rest of the water line, so. As far as that goes, as soon as they're ready to turn everything on. They're ready to go, um. And. Like I said, uh, it sounded like from the contractors and the homeowner, they're, they're hoping to be moving in in a few months, so. As quick as possible anyways. Uh, down here on Fourth Street at the bridge right by the courthouse there. I'm sure some of you know, I know I've talked to Joanne about it a couple of times, um. We have a beaver that's been. Doing its business, and so we've been keeping it cleaned out the best we can, it's. A battle right now. But we are working to figure out the best route to. Get the beaver out of there. Have it relocated or something, so. Um. As far as out at the shop, Gary's been doing maintenance on all of our vehicles, just looking everything over. Um. And then around town, we've been doing some. Like, uh, trimming and brush cleanup, stuff that we don't always get to get, get to because we're. More so concentrated on roads and sidewalks, this weather has kind of helped us for that, so. Um, that's pretty much been on one.
It's a question, the other little bridge, does that be down the two track?
I did go and look at that.
Is that going to be repaired in the spring?
Uh, that is something that Ron and I have discussed in the past, um, I know that there's been. Some looking into what would need to be done to get that repaired, so.
A lot of people use it.
Right, I know we have. A lot of. Bridge work that needs to be done, so.
Thank you.
Just getting funding for it, so, so.
So on your beaver. We have a renewable contractor that's involved.
Okay.
That takes care of all our, your, and just up there. All Dave or Justin.
Okay.
Set trouble down, they update that.
Okay, perfect.
He's here to take them.
Okay.
It's not too.
Thank you.
Any other question for, yeah? If not, we'll move on to development report, Mr. Perry Ellis.
I'm not so shy, I'll stand up here. Good evening, everybody, hope you're enjoying the spring weather. Unexpected spring weather. Uh, so let's start with housing, uh as you know, I've been working uh with the. Townships uh doing a countywide housing study, and we wanted to get ahead. Of all the other counties so that we could uh get some development going before. The plumbers and contractors were all gobbled up, uh as the the governor has announced a one point four billion dollar. Budget for housing this coming year, as it turns out, we have done a great job of jumping the gun and getting ahead of everybody because. Uh, Mishna has still uh not released and rolled out uh their funding mechanisms. And their different programs that they're gonna use to uh incentivize this development, and we're hoping. There they've they've got a lot of workshops and so forth coming up this spring uh to introduce the different municipalities and. Townships and counties and villages to uh how they're going to uh roll out uh all this money. So uh as we receive our housing study, need study, and then the coming week or two. Uh, we will have that in hand and and we're ready to go, we're gonna be planning a uh developer's day sort of thing. Uh, where we're gonna invite local developers, not necessarily uh stay away from larger developers, but we're gonna at least uh bring. Uh, our local developers into the village hall and and introduce them to the different incentive programs, so. Uh, for example, Ms. Cook, if she and her husband wanted, had an empty lot and wanted to put a duplex up. They could be micro developers and uh build a duplex or quadplex with some of this incentive money, so. Uh, I know I've been talking about that uh as we approach uh twenty twenty-four, here it is, and and we're just waiting. Uh, on uh the state to roll out some of these programs. Uh, you may have heard Ron talk about last week, one of uh the better incentive uh. Uh, grant programs that provided by MEDC is called the Match on Main Street Program. And uh for whatever reason, that has been put on hold, so Ron and I have uh asked the DDA. If they would consider taking up the slack on that program and uh funding uh some of our local business projects locally. So more to come on that, hopefully, uh in the next couple of months, I continue to take. RRC training, uh again, uh RRC is redevelopment ready communities. Uh, when you hear on the street, and I know you do, and and the village manager and the president and myself. We hear, hey, you got a lot of really good uh momentum going here in the village, uh we've got some great uh new businesses in town and and so forth. Uh, a lot of that is because of this RRC designation. And the symbols right there on the back of uh Mr. Miller's uh computer, I just noticed that uh because we took our little photograph down, but. This designation was something that came about with a lot of hard work uh by the village council, by Dan Scow in particular, uh and Ron. And it has brought uh already uh uh a lot of money to our community. For the businesses to expand, to build and and to even open, so. Uh, this program is great, I'm doing the training right now, and uh hopefully this leads to some more. Uh, more improvements as we go through twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. Rocktoberfest, we talked about that a little bit, uh we sat down. We decided to move that date up a week, so it will, the next year, if you want to put it in your calendars, it'll be the first Saturday of October. Rather than the second Saturday of October, and uh so similar format, uh just. Moving it up uh. One week to the first week. You may have remem- you may have remembered, uh I I put something on Facebook with the Village Facebook page about. Uh, a group of University of Michigan graduate students visiting, just randomly visiting our. Uh, village hall uh this summer, and uh one of them reached out looking for a internship uh with a small municipality. Uh, interested in sustainability, uh. Particularly community gardens and such, and so. Uh, I've reached out to Maureen, and uh we are gonna look at uh s- look to see if we can bring this young man in and provide an internship, he would work probably. Directly with uh the community garden folks uh on a. Day-to-day basis, and uh he would need a host family, however, he's about twenty-one years old. And so uh if you know anybody that might be interested in hosting a. Uh, graduate student at the University of Michigan. Uh, who is interested in an internship here, uh please reach out to me uh because he's gonna need a place to live, so. If you've uh been watching uh the news, you may have seen a couple spots on. The common spot, which is the old Chase Bank, which now has a name. Uh, we have heard different things like uh. Coney Island style restaurant, brewery, and and some other sorts of things, they are moving forward with that project, but if you remember. Uh, the the same ownership group, or very similar ownership group is also the one. Uh, that is developing the the former Tin Fish Roscoe's Bums. Uh, empty lot right now, and. As I understand it, their priorities right now are. Gonna be with this Chase Bank building, and so we may or may not see. Uh, that restaurant project until. Possibly the fall of of this year, rather than, a lot of people were excited that uh maybe we would have a new restaurant. In town uh this summer, yeah, built this spring. But uh it doesn't look like that's gonna occur. Just yet, uh plans always change, it seems like, so. Uh, just a little update. On where we think uh that's going. And uh, oh. You also may have heard me talk about the social district concept, the idea Grayling does the social district. The idea that you could purchase uh an alcoholic beverage in one bar. And then walk out street, out out in the street and uh walk around, uh you could uh sit down at picnic tables and drink your. Your beer in the downtown area. Uh, I'm moving forward with uh the application process on that, but I need at least one village council member. One planning commis- commission member. And uh a member of the DDA to serve on a committee as I apply those or apply for those grants or that, excuse me, not that grant. The social district concept, and so if any one of you are interested in serving on a committee to explore the social district, treat out to me. Uh, I need one of you uh to serve uh on that committee, as uh the. Village Council would need to pass a resolution. Uh, in favor of the social district, if the. Council doesn't pass that, then we don't, we I can't apply and and uh it's a a done deal, so. You know, whether you're here or near, positive, negative, uh doesn't matter. If you want to serve on that committee, reach out to me. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Hell?
Yeah, um, this boutique store that's closing, do we know if there's another business interested?
Um, no, uh, I don't know the gentleman. Same gentleman owns the the hardware down at the old uh. Uh. Not Saint Benny's, what was it, it's a Columbus Hall, yeah, Gilbrys. Gentleman that owns that Gilbrys owns that thing, and uh I I could say I heard rumors and so forth, but. I I really don't know what's gonna go in there.
Um, the uncommonly good store that sold, do you know if the present people in the working bought it, or if you know, we don't know about it?
No, they didn't.
Yeah, we we heard from a couple. Uh, again, I I didn't talk to them specifically, but I know some people have. And apparently they did not uh win the auction, and so uh I don't, I had heard maybe yesterday. They didn't even know.
Are we looking at another empty building there, do you think, or we don't know?
I don't know.
Okay.
Where to get a read.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
It was another bill, but I had some momentum, yeah. So.
They uh.
She was.
They have done a fantastic job, but they they ran the. The boiler broke down, the roof, the new roof has gotten all over it. And and the boiler actually had an heat. And Michigan had to shut it down. Safety reasons, so they're heating it, it's totally heated, right? And they're they're. You know, I'm not sure what they're what what they're playing, they're they're not going out of business, it's just a matter of where. They they got guitar, they give guitar lessons, they got guitars given to them, a whole truck that. They went down, God, I found a full table for them, very. They, they brought that, they're they're just doing a lot of really good things there. It's just a matter of. Well, they are, yeah. And. One more thing, Jim, thank you, you're doing a very good job, I I mentioned this when you weren't here, and and every time I see something you post, I think. Man, this guy is. Yeah, I I mentioned it at the last meeting you worked here, I said. You know, I I had no idea, I mean, I've known you for a long time, yeah, that's a fact, I've known you for a long time, but I've never realized. What a great job that. I appreciate you. I appreciate the good doing.
Any other questions for Mr. Perry Ellis? Mr. Perry Ellis.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Perry Ellis, for all your updates. Next item, digital recording, village council meeting, Mr. Alter.
All right, uh Jim and I. Uh, doing a little bit of uh homework since our our last meeting. And uh. Kind of the long and short of, as we met with the uh commissioner's office. Trying to study their format, they seem to have that down down to a science. And one thing that uh uh. That you have heard me say, say in the past. The Teams format and the Zoom format, they both do the same thing, which is true. But. The Zoom format, there's just less steps you have to go through. It's a lot more user friendly. And so uh uh for a hundred and fifty bucks-ish, we signed up for a Zoom uh membership for a year. And uh uh. And. Jim and I seem to feel that. That uh recording these meetings. Now is gonna be uh a lot easier, so I keep the the Teams format, like the biopsym meeting with MEDC and stuff like this. But we would solely use uh the Zoom uh format, and on our website. There there's a Zoom link. And so as you said before, this meeting is being recorded. Uh, we figured out using how how we can post caption and. How to upload it and different things like that, it just seemed with that Teams, there was. So many steps involved, and this one step lost it. And 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 there was uh. Uh, Jim and I were pulling the hair out of our heads, a little bit we have left, and and. And so in talking with Anthony coming here. Uh, last Friday, we we ordered a special uh. Laptop just just for recording meetings, and that's it, and that's really my usual, and. And got that that all set up, we adjusted our our microphones. Uh, they've never sound better as far as uh uh picking up the sound, you know, if if they're zooming in and touch and so. Uh, Jim, anything more you want to add on that, or just?
Yeah, once the figures that the center has under this menu. Stop the recording, uh the difference of. Now, I know that it's rated that. And Carl Miller. Search for in your account, or again.
Okay, so let's just say on Wednesday. Someone wants to review tonight's meeting. How do they do that?
Whether we go to our website.
A little bit link. We got right on there today. Like we clicked right on there, we're on there.
So hopefully we get posted to one of you. You know, we discussed this. Couple meetings ago about. You upload to YouTube, take that link and post it on the Facebook page. That's what I would like, I don't know the rest of them, and. As far as how long to keep them on there, I mean. Keep them on there. And there might be a couple of time where we have to refer to them, you know, something that we did three years ago. And we can go on YouTube and.
But these videos are not our official record, our minutes would still be our official records. And. I know we've we've always done like Teams and stuff like that, but we got a lot of public comments, no. No, I mean, we could, but.
We did with Teams.
Oh, yeah, we could, but but uh uh but these meetings here are are just a one-way communication. They can hear what we're talking about and discussing, and then go off there.
I think we should love this with public comment, like we always have in the past.
Yeah, I think then you run into into two uh problems, down the road, you got people commenting on things that. Might live live in India, you know, I mean, it it it.
They're still part of the public, doesn't matter where they live.
I I I think if, you know, uh. If if the if the understanding was. Uh, when we started this, for people to to zoom in and and see what what we discussed, I think we are we are conscious there, I think if you open up farther net. Uh, who's gonna respond to all all that, I mean, if if it's just uh. I I I don't see any. In this day and age, the way people comment on uh on everything that that happens, uh I I just don't see anything. I mean, how about that, that we can't remember here.
I'm talking about them coming up, not like commenting like this, coming up on the screen. If they like, is there any public comment, and anybody. On Zoom, they want a public comment, they can come up on the screen. We did that with Teams. I remember my neighbor James. Over there commented about the snowmobile deal one time on Teams. I even be on rules about. People can attend our meetings and make a public comment. That was like censorship censorship to me, but.
I realize I'm not official. Sorry guys, you make it with drug conspiracy. You know, like a court on your children, whatever. You know, I just don't.
Any other comment on digital recording? For Mr. Alder or Mr. Perry Ellis? If not, we'll move on. Next item is new business, Hiawatha update, Mr. Alden, you will see in the newspaper this week, uh. A posting coming out uh for a a free bid announcement for Hiawatha. Uh. Mr. McGee and myself, there are just a a. Couple forms that we have to tweak, other than that, everything has been handed in. We have to post it in the paper. And and go for a thirty-day uh period. On that, and there's a public hearing that we have to.
On that and there's a public hearing that we have to, uh, post as well. We're trying to get those postings to run simultaneously. So we can save a little time. Figure a thirty day, if it comes in this Thursday, that would be the sixteenth, uh. Month, let's just say it's it's mid, uh, mid March and, uh, we we can then, uh, uh. Start accepting bids and and taking care of that. So hopefully, uh, uh. You know, we're looking at mid March to early April, we can get to get the bids out and 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 then we'll happen at that point. Let's just say it, say the bids come in twenty percent higher than the last time we bid the project out. Then what we're gonna do is take those, uh. The bid, uh, range and go back to M E D C and ask for an increase. In their grant that they, uh, originally we originally applied for two years ago. And, uh, uh, and due to some of the delays and things that we had encountered. That, uh, the price of business has gone up and in our original. Grant application, we said we would, uh, we would match sixteen percent. You know, we didn't have to match anything, but we wanted to make our grant more attractive. So we said we would, uh, uh, match sixteen percent. Well, sixteen percent on. Eight hundred thousand dollars is a lot different than sixty percent on one point two million, wherever that. Income comes in that. So, uh, I mean, he seen said that they would take it back to the board. For consideration to increase, uh. The grant amount. So, uh, so once that's happened. Then the grant will be officially, uh, awarded to us. And we can start going on with, uh, with, uh, uh. Uh, the construction at that time. So it is gonna happen this summer and, uh. And and we we, uh, uh, we're getting close. I want to think. Uh, especially Tammy, for every week we sit down and we're still having these weekly meetings with M E D C and. About a half a dozen o- other, uh, uh, partners in there and and it's just, it's it's been a, uh. A very tedious process, but. We're we're al- almost there. So hopefully and we're gonna start hearing hammers and saws. Any questions for Mr. Alden on the Hiawatha? If not, we'll move on to next item, which is twenty twenty fourth County Village, Full Home, Mr. Stern.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting me tonight to come talk about the county's proposed public safety village. Um, there hasn't been a whole lot of information that's gone out. Some of you may have received the flyer in the mail. Um, with a short explanation of what this village is about. The county pro- is proposing a two. Mill. Public safety village that will cover expenses specifically related to public safety. That encompasses. Our jail. Emergency management. Our seasonal patrols, which is marine snowmobile, snowmobile and ORV patrols. It also covers. Our medical examiner's expenses. Courthouse security. The security staff that's put in place. And I know I'm forgetting something else. I apologize. What's that? Oh, Sting, thank you very much. And there's and our, uh, partnership with Sting Narcotics, which is our drug team. Which is a six county drug team that covers Roscommon County. What I want to raise this. Over the years since. I've been sheriff, the county's general fund money has been dwindling every year. Uh, we've done a really good job with our road patrol village and been able to sustain our road patrol and not having to raise that village. I completely accept village from. Public safety village. Everything that I've listed off so far is funded through the general fund. And with dwindling general fund. And the. Decrease in tax dollars is coming to the county. Every year there. Services. Cut employees throughout county. They've cut, got the county building. And oh. Looking at running this public safety means to keep service back because. I didn't. Oh, our jail. We a two million dollar. And it's for the bill. Different.
Situation is particularly.
Any questions for Mr. Stern? On the mill, your your staff, how how many, uh. People are already shy right now of their staff. On the roadside, I'm not.
How many mates are incarcerated right now? If the funding goes through, will you hire more officers or is that? The three officers you have, the three. Day of the three night shift, is that all you need is those six officers? Okay. Maintaining your behalf. Thank you. I'll just set it in the box, didn't you?
Any other questions for Mr. Stern?
Yeah, excuse me. I don't want to be rude, but. I'm I'm against this, uh, and I'm going to be voting no. I've already announced that. Uh, I'm a senior citizen. And, uh, you know how I pay my taxes? I've got eleven hundred dollars worth of taxes to pay. Wednesday, day after tomorrow. What I have to do, since I'm a senior citizen, the consumer power company won't shut my power. Door and freezing weather, so I don't pay my electric bill. I use that. To pay my taxes, I save it up. And put it together. I'm working a part time job. Um, I'm eighty two. I was eighty two yesterday. And, uh, so where's the money coming? It it I don't have any.
Uh. Maybe that has some aging on my life. My temp has shut down. Um, again. I don't know why there's so many letters after the reason. Everything I'm doing. The age and everything I'm doing. It is because of all which the building returned. Someone talks about it. I think they. People doing it, but I did not. All games, but. Um, I have that there is all. Communication with village going back to you. If you go back to the red tab. I'm out for you guys. It's one I did. What in the world I can. Um, from that, right, thanks. But I never heard anything. Or the time just then. Yeah, I especially about there. None of everything about. Then. Welcome back. We we both my own person. I mean, I'm a chef. Then, uh, again. Ron, call me. And I'm trying to. And we don't. But uh, over. When it's over, I'm decided. I don't want. I mean, this. Um, but I can't say they prepared it. They didn't hear anything but any higher much. Well, I told them again. Again. Hostability. Uh, first, does he need engineers to plan? Uh, then. Where I put my wishes with the engineer to plan. You'll get me to that. But I do that. But we can do my building. Do we know? All of this time, training, all this fun, it's all you need. He never knew. Okay, continue. Then. Tell me again. And I'm given a violation letter. So I have been very compliant. But I didn't let it go. So I tell you my donation permit again. And then contact the guy and say, what am I doing wrong? What do I need to do? This is all we could package. So. And. So I'm about. And three twenty four. After receiving an ally account threat letter. There's violation. Because we can be facing a lot of other things. After receiving that, a funding attack. That is a two pass. So there. Right. It's not a trap. We found this case. I'm trying to look at your advice. Which, so you're guys is only going to be here for one seven. Right here. With an application isn't even think the zoning industry is coming in. And you had a list of all the fishing people back up. I was better than you ever. Well, to go now. We are. Hello, Kevin. All these companies was my buildings for that. Is this highlighted in the circuit? I know for a fact that he has not required anyone to ever build his house. Because I know this because I am the sole original for as far as my signature. Wow. Now, I'm very upset. Because I've had to do hours of weeks having to. Going through all your zoning licenses. To figure out why I'm leaving this stuff. Because I have players and engineers who work for the plan. But I have a legal change. I essentially built fifteen nineteen years. Going that way. On top of that, new craft. In two thousand seventeen, let's do the same problem. They put up something without pulling the next one. They were never told to be their lot. They were never told to tear it down. Here I am, receiving this threat level. Well. Um. They won't. And if I come around on Thursday, I need a site plan. I'm trying to move a site plan. For the recommendations that I've done every single thing I'm reviewing for it. And the site plan. They will not be even staffed in fact. And. Yeah. That's why I made. What I was like. What do you do is help me out? Not to have. As as long as every goal, I'm willing to give it to us. I'm willing to do whatever you need. I just. Can't tear down my building. If I tear down my building, it's not gonna go into the company. On top of that, there's no reason when I've been doing everything to those hospitals. We turn every doctor. We pay every phone call in twenty four hours. You find the picture.
Um. I'm sorry you're going off through this. I'd like to look into this a little more because this is the first time we've seen this. So we can't act.
First of all, yeah, it's it's period because. By this.
No. So we, um. We would have to look into it for our standard. As a council, uh, if you'd like. Be honest, to give us that much time. Um, I'd like to see, can we stop the fines or whatever and not have make. Kick out this building by March.
I mean, I was saying I was gonna make a motion to. Halt any action for ninety days until you get straightened out.
Yeah, yeah. The thing is that pays out without.
Why not?
Anything outside of law. The gentleman for time. There's no engineering.
One of them. I mean. Mr. Oh, do you have any comments on any of this?
Chase, did you ever have a meeting with Mr. Lex? And and. Goes. I mean, prior to this, we knew what you were doing on the properties and go step for step and tell you. All.
I think that crime. So. Those are major signs by um, and. Was about doing that right away.
And he didn't do the fence and all the other uh, violations he's.
Next year. And again, once later in the Bronco.
So you haven't been abusing. What you've built. Correct, and even trying to to make it correct, yeah.
The thing is, if you're gonna, he's gonna throw a loan to the man. And the only who retired, whether I'm sending him completely permanent or not. Who's the supplier to? Then. A note, there's an all the officials who's lying and correct.
Correct.
We speak general community from this guy and that's not initially.
I'm sorry you're going through this too. Yeah.
I'll say, uh, Jason met this morning and a lot of the information that he ever done that he shared against one. As well as the nerve packet. And, uh, uh. And. Top of the case, it's my understanding that. That everything that has been, uh, requested, we now have. And, uh, uh, and and again, I, uh, I contacted, uh, Mr. Lex. And told him that the package they've given on his desk. And and he, uh, uh. His response was, uh, uh, good. He goes, I'll redo that once and when I'm in. And that that, uh, uh, he goes, hey, this one, you know, I I wanna. Look for the people and, uh, uh, but he was, I'll I'll be in once each year with you.
I mean, I I suppose. Everybody's giving violation, but it's. I mean, from where the building. I can't even help.
And that that's a question for him to see with the letter.
They did. So I mean, even if even if it's a letter, you're supposed to pay, but. But they're doing wrong, you know. I mean, but the sound right. Simple letters are supposed to pay when you're wrong.
Where your violations are.
There's supposed to be a corrective action.
Chase. Uh. Did you want to meet, uh, Wednesday at one o'clock? I know you're.
I'm ready. Okay, yeah.
All right, well, we'll we'll arrange something. We'll we'll make it out. And I'll. All right.
Can we assure him?
Halt any enforcement for ninety days?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm going to. Deal with the council, like. A bit of a motion or whatever you need, like.
I'd like to make a motion to halt any enforcement action for ninety days on one oh one ballot.
Oh, yeah, that's our second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Stop what that stop any further.
Violations.
Violations, yeah.
Enforcement.
Enforcement.
If you can. Share with me, uh, name and number. All of it. With all of.
You were thirty.
No, I said that.
Yeah, okay.
Now that. Before he can enter the first.
Actually paid more. I'm not hearing from him or miscommunication you doing a penal act for.
Always got to be trying to talk different. I was. Well, you're like. Yeah, it's been a pain, but. But that's how we left the thing, but you like why I thought. Through these, but. But, um. Communications, that's it. I mean, what I'm doing wrong, you know, I think.
Have you paid fines already?
No, I don't.
Okay.
That's all the time. I have a period I'm not really talking about.
Okay.
That's that's where I do that.
Hey, we have a first second. Any more discussion?
Yes, one of this this threat letter here. Thing I noticed is not on a village letterhead. I think this guy should be. Piping up a letter on behalf of the village. Be on a letterhead to make it. For this most professional. Well, we don't, we should fire him. I mean. I'm not always tempted to fire him. Lack of communication. Remember a few meetings ago, or was it a couple of years ago? Dan Dan Scous said, when it comes to communication, we can't communicate enough. So. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Have you talked to Mr. Lex?
I did one time when I had a good permit and I kinda had the same conundrum. He sent me a threat letter. Well, it was. More of a violation letter, but.
But you didn't talk to him about this yet.
No, not this. But he did the same thing for me. We'll we'll get to that and we'll. I gotta, I'd like to make another motion too after this one.
So like.
Yes, we have a roll call, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
I make another, my other motion I'd like to make is. With Mr. Shepkey's trouble and time and everything else that he does new business and. First thing to build in the industrial park in thirty, forty years. I'd like to make a motion to waive. Any building fee. Building permit fees.
I have a motion to waive all building fees for Mr. Shepkey. Where his time and trouble.
And just to kind of promote. Business and growth. Because. I don't know if you guys have ever seen the fee schedule for. We approved it just. Ten months ago or so, but it is very confusing. You look it over. We're supposed to make it easy and I I voted no one last year because I'm kind of against.
I second that from you.
Can I get a second before we make any more discussion?
I'll second that also.
Thank you.
That what you asked for?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, I was just saying, our building. Fee schedule is very confusing. They charge you like twenty cents, but you know, you need almost a math degree to figure this thing out. Then on top of the the sort of the ten percent. Charge. For the overall cost of, I mean, it can get pretty expensive. If we're trying to promote business and growth and all this, you know, that's gonna kind of deter people. Then when it's this much trouble to obtain a building permit. Those, I mean, if we're going for growth and all that, we should kind of just be rubber stamping all this stuff. It's within the confines of the law, you know, within the setbacks and all that looks good. They'll make a pay a small per permit fee or some, but some of these permits can get thousands of dollars. And like Mr. Shepkey said, now he's paid for engineering. I mean, just for all storage bar to start a business, just kind of.
Those those fees are based upon, if someone. Gave us a site plan. And said, or let's just say they they gave us blueprints, uh, when it's more finalized and it's, uh, all right, for the planning commission. You gotta approve that. None of them are engineers. So that fee is to pay for a professional engineer to come in and make sure everything's approved. Those aren't just not numbers that they pull out to say, let's charge them this, it's gonna be able to charge it. Those are there for for a reason. Ours is one of the lowest around. And part of, uh, uh, the RRC process. Some of those we have decreased over the years. To make it more, as Tony said, let them put the money back in in into the business and such. Those numbers are based upon because. When you have your communities and such, and they need to be. Okay, they're giving them a blessing. They may not have. The certification to know whether or not this utility line has to be so many feet away from this and that. But an engineer would. And so therefore, when you send those plans out to be approved. And it comes back to to the, uh, planning commission for, uh, uh, approval and such. Uh, they are based upon, you know, information that that's solid. And not just say, yeah, looks good. Uh. Angela and I spent, sorry, three, four meetings where we're looking at. At site plans and blueprints and stuff like this. And even though, let's just say, one has, uh. All the, uh, dashes in for, uh, for a parking lot. When you look closely, it doesn't mean. Mean that they're all the same size. And and different areas and in 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 different codes you have to follow. That again. Uh. Most people are not aware, so you have to pay for that service to make sure that that the terms. Uh, it 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 looks good on paper. I'll give you an example of that. You go up to Kirtland. You got a beautiful gymnasium facility there. They got eight ba- eight, uh, pickleball courts laid out there. It looked beautiful. However, they're three feet apart. So you get someone from this court going for the ball this way and someone on this this court. Now you're running into each other's courts. It looked good on paper, but it's not practical. And 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 so therefore you pay for, uh, engineering costs. But tho- those fees are not something that that, uh, that you who who set those fees. Ultimately, uh, off of of recommendations. Those are fees that are there for a reason. So I I I think it's it's, uh, uh. To start waiving things before we know what we're talking about. I think it 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 is something that, uh. If not, them who's gonna pay for it.
I was gonna say, excuse me, Ron, but I I was wondering if what Tony's motion, does it aid in lethal? Yeah, I'm. That's my, that's my thinking. I mean, I'm not opposed here to me, I I understand. But can we legally do it?
I understand what Ron's saying too, the building fee or anything, but it. You have to pay more, uh, engineering fees or that should have been covered under the building fees or am I wrong?
No, the 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 engineering costs, um, that Mr. Shepkey's paying is when he. When he bought like this kit or so to to, uh, build his the building.
Okay.
It was built. It was set up for residential. This is commercial. So now he has all upgrades and and so now, you know, unfortunately, he has to pay for an engineer. Go through and restructure it. To to ma- make it commercial grade. And and as Chase told me, Jiggle, either, and I gotta look at the kind of screws he used and different things to to ma- make it. Make sure that the holds. Holds to that level, so so that that's the the engineering part that. That the, uh.
Shouldn't that have been brought up prior from him, the building? When putting the building up? Um, with the building closed and all and, uh. I I guess I don't understand that the lack of information.
Well, I I I.
And you tried to get with Mr. Lex. And you have the country nothing. That's what I like.
Again, I still. That can move up to you. Everything is that for it. But I mean.
But it seems to me that we just don't have enough information about. The whole thing to then start waiving fees and stuff. We need, there would need to be.
Yeah.
We need the up the time to go through all of this and figure and let Ron talk to Jim. And get all the information before we start adding on more.
Certain position is with the commission.
Yeah.
And Chase and I talked about that and we have one. And that's with this one.
I'm not, I'm not asking.
Hey, I got a motion on the table to waive all fees for Shepkey. The building and. So.
But you do a second.
Then you, we got a second.
Second.
You checked it.
Joanne, do you?
Thank you.
So now we have to vote on it. So. Yes.
So.
No.
All right.
No.
I know.
Yeah.
No.
No.
Yeah. Most of them. So Chase, we will look into stuff, we'll we'll work with you on it. Um, the building looks great, you're doing a great job out there. Sorry, come down to this, so. For communication failure is what it looks like to me. But we'll look in that and we'll get back with you. And you'll be at the plan commission this month, I guess, so. We'll get some answers before that. Next item, number eight, discussion items. It's not. I have. I have a little, uh. Issue here, I I bring these up from time to time. Um. About minute taking. And. And here's one, okay, uh, on the downtown development authority. Uh, it says it's under check number thirteen eighty. Bill, what you're asked common, and it lists Don and Jim Sower. Uh. We know who Don and Jim are, or Dan and Jim are now. But. Who are they, I mean, who will they be? You know, a month from now, six months from now, somebody, who's that? Well, we know who you are. They they need to put your last name in. The one thing. And 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 also. They gotta figure out there are forty eight hundred dollars. But it's two of you, well, you are you guys dividing that? Yeah, but we don't know that, see. It should. It should specifically be. If half of that is twenty four hundred going to you and the other going to Dan, we don't know. And and it's not, it's just not good. Good minute taking. I just wanted to bring that up.
What what month is that new?
This is this one right now, Ron. It's it's a DDA minutes and it's it's check number thirteen eighty. Uh. And I've I've brought it up before about, and it was different people taking the minutes, this is a different person. But it's when you you just don't write a person's name down like John or Bill or. You you know, you you use their last name as well, so you know who they are because. Well, like, for instance, uh, Dan, I'm Dan, and that's Dan Scow probably, that's what I'm guessing. And then there's Jim. Barry Allison, there's Jim, Jim, uh. Jim Letts, but Jim, uh. Uh. Jim Anderson, yeah. So you, so you got different gyms, you know, it's just a, I mean, I hate to be nitpicking, but. But, uh. That's.
I will let her know.
Yeah, that's what minute taking is. You gotta be specific when you, you know, when you write these things down. Um. Okay, sorry, but. Anything else for discussion? Um, I think we're having chat. No discussion, I think we need to look into this for chat, for Chase and look into it. If we're what, we're a failure. Female. We Jim Letts and our board and such. If we have more discussion items. I'd like to go to public now, to ask for speaker. Anyone?
I'd like to say something. I'm just, you know. Like, for any. For the public person. I saw. You wanting your. Officer. The Dallas killer. He was afraid that you're asking. Or Dr. Pat. From helping out. And they also were digging in the old apartment. There's a lot that he said for our community or our conference. And it was hard and. That could hit me because. Ron should have just put on a badge. They really took the hurt. It personally didn't have, got out, I never go. He's helping this person get a call. And I know that they they all felt with stuff like this. That's what community should be about. So my personal opinion, I vote. I will vote for it, not in that. But. Because of that active climate, that's why I want to hear about. Because of. Very good.
And 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 I will say, I, as I already pointed out to you.
I understand.
Yeah, I have nothing against Ed, you know, like I said, I've. I've helped the 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 sheriff's department with different things and and and, you know, and I have no, no, it's just a matter of finances. You know, and 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 I served on this council when we had no money.
I'm happy.
Years ago, years ago, when we had no money. But I've never seen so much money, uh, coming through this council. Uh, uh, like back in in the nineteen nineties, like, oh, my, we we couldn't afford anything. So, you know, it it happens, all things, all, thank you, I'm sorry about that. Any more public knowledge? If not, move on to council comments, Mr. Medina.
I'd just like to say that you haven't been at the craft center ever, let's just check it out. Great asset to the community. Looking something miles around to use the basketball court and the gym and. We got classes for people of all ages and use it up after school programs and. A great thing they got going out there.
Anything? Really?
Um, Nelson. Glad that we are even changed up today. You're out, what you're doing or what. Meditation back and forth. Or settling. He does, so we have to wait until February and then do some. Even as soon. Yeah.
Yeah, I I'd like to thank Ron for for, uh, taking the initiative on this other building over here, if it, you know, if it's something that looks out for us. You're always looking, Ron, you're always. You're always out there looking for something to include the village and I appreciate that, you know, uh. And I thought this was a good meeting, thanks. Everyone is under control, there's no, uh. No, there's, I mean, I've been in meetings, uh, people are ready to throw baseball with that, you know. Of course, it was just me. But, uh. Anyway, it's, uh. It was a good meeting and thank you very much.
Um, I. I'm also glad that. Chase came in, just left, but, um. Especially if we're going to be putting in. Water at that industrial park and hopefully getting some other people in. This is, you know, it's un- unfortunate that you would have to be the guinea pig on this, but it. Could be exposing some areas that we really do need to strengthen before we make improvements and have other potential future problems.
Joanne?
Yeah, um, I make sense. If you, uh, hire a month of update from a life. Freeze summer, that would be finally look so high down it. Thank you. Uh, yeah.
Don't they tell me, I I go.
Yeah.
I would like to, uh. Send a thank you to the DPW for doing what they do the best. If everybody looks safe and running smoothly. Thank the public for coming, Matt, Ed. Steve and Jim and the chef and Chase and his dad. Um. That's really all I got to do. Okay, next item is items for next, uh, agenda.
We had the audit review. There and on. Uh. Hope that that time, uh, uh, we'll be able to. Uh, we'll give you update on the high lock, but it'll be at at the point where things have been posted and when the.